Call to order at 7:18. We are entering into executive session to discuss 2.1 Board of Education matters, superintendent evaluation, 2.2 Board of Education matters, board officers. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? So moved. All in favor? Okay. We'll be back. Okay, we call to order at 7:18 PM. We went into executive session to discuss 2.1 Board of Education matters, superintendent evaluation, and 2.2 Board of Education matters, board officers. And can we all stand for the flag to wave, just please? Flag to wave. Now, any comments with public? Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with any revisions? No. No revisions. Second. All in favor? I'll speak louder. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel, consent agenda special services, consent agenda business?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Okay, and special report. This is a very special night for us.
Yes, it is. Well, first of all, we do have a special report, a few special reports. We are going to be introducing our tenure candidates who are here this evening. But also, we have some teacher probationary appointments on the agenda tonight, and I'm not sure if they are here with us. Dr. Rebecca Greenwell, are you in the audience? Rebecca, no. She will be a school psychologist at Byram Hills High School. Catherine O'Rourke will be an elementary teacher at Coman Hill. Colleen Pufall. Yay, Colleen! Okay, Colleen, you're here. Stand up. Give it a good, give her a good round. Fantastic. Colleen has actually worked in Byram Hills as a building substitute and a leave for the past two years, and now is here in full capacity as an elementary teacher, and we couldn't be more thrilled. And Alexandra Steele, who is actually in Colorado, and she will be an elementary teacher at Wampus. So we do welcome them, and I think now we can move on to our special report. Oh, no, we can't. Another thing to talk about is a business consent agenda item. Our Byram Hills Education Foundation, and everyone knows, all the students know who the BHF is, most parents in the community know about our Education Foundation. They have been responsible for well over $5 million worth of grants in their time in Byram Hills. And in addition to very big grants, like all of the libraries that they've done in each of the buildings, and their commitment to help us raise funds for this library renovation and field renovation. The BHF also does something, in addition to their regular grants, called Insta-grants. And an Insta-grant is something that a teacher can apply for, and it has become so popular that the Education Foundation had to give us an additional donation of $3,850.72 because our Insta-grants exceeded the amount that they originally donate to the district for that purpose. So I want to thank our teachers for putting in those Insta-grants that benefit our kids, and the BHF for saying, yes, bring more on when you have more. So thank you so much to them for this donation. It is a thick agenda, Mia. Very thick. And now, special report number one. So excited for this. Are the recognition of the Byram Hills High School Mock Trial Westchester County Champions. And I may add that this is not the first time the Mock Trial County Champions have graced us at a board meeting. So we, you know, you're starting to spoil us now. We will be expecting to see you quite often. We do know that Martin Gilbert has been very active as your coach, has also Matt Allen, and he has your trophy that you received. And we would like Matt and, to come up, actually, right now, if you don't mind, Martin, to not only show the trophy, but to give a little speech about Mock Trial and what you have done. We have students who served as witnesses. Can you raise your hand if you were a witness? I think that, I don't want to steal Martin's thunder and Matt's thunder. They will explain the different roles that you're. I have glue. Not even necessary, see?
Didn't break though.
Nothing cheap. Hey, Martin!
You good? I don't carry the trophy because it's bigger than me. But it's, it's good. So on behalf of the Mock Trial team, Coach Gilbert and I would like to say thank you to the community, school administration, the school board. Thank you for having us here, to recognize us. Also, we have to say congratulations to all those that are receiving tenure. Awesome, see some of my colleagues out here, very cool. So yes, we've been here a few times. This is our third time in five years winning championship. It's my first. I just joined the team, really, this year. Martin has really run this squad for a very long time here. He's probably the winningest coach in Byram Hills' history across the board. Mock Trial is like an endurance test of sorts. It's a culmination of months of work. The members of the team put in tirelessly, announce the preparation and memorization to get ready, openings, directs, crosses. And each part of it along the way, they just get better and better and better. This year, the team really improved with each trial. In the quarterfinals, we defeated Blodbrook High School, sort of a rival, and number one senior reigning champion. I know that sounds bizarre, but there is a rivalry that goes on between these schools. A decisive victory in the semifinals against Austinin, and we landed the finals against Edgemont and took down the championship. It was incredible. So Coach Gilbert now is going to introduce the members of the team.
There's not enough time to talk about each individual kid. Each person on the team, but everyone here really contributed. I have a short thing I'm going to say about some of the kids. So I want to talk a little bit about the seniors. We have an amazing group of seniors. In fact, three of them were on teams when they were freshmen that won the county championship.
This is a comedy sideski.
So I will mention the seniors, my name, Jake Fenster, John Manowitz.
Wait, wait, slowly, and they can raise their hands.
Jake Fenster.
Hey, Jake!
John Manowitz. Zach, you want to raise your hand? Romi, you want to raise your hand? And Jessica Freeburg. So the seniors, the seniors provided leadership and really made a huge difference. They brought their experience from past years, and that was really critical to our success. So we have five people on the team that have first names that start with A. You want to raise your hand if you're one of those people with the odds? They're the juniors and one sophomore. So I call them the Byram Hills A-Team. So the Byram Hills A-Team consists of Adriana, you want to raise your hand? Aaron. So Aaron and Adriana had the opportunity to be lawyers for the first time this year, and they really nailed it, and they made a huge difference for this year. But, you know, everyone who is a coach of Mock Trial knows that it's not just the lawyers, it's the witnesses. So we had some amazing witnesses. Ashley was in almost every trial. You want to raise your hand, Ashley? And the last member of our A-Team, our only sophomore, is Amelia. You want to raise your hand, Amelia? So Andrew, I forgot Andrew. Andrew Levy, you want to raise your hand too? Andrew is like many of the other kids on the A-Team. I asked him several times to double up. They did it. And also, I asked him to double up sometimes on short notice. So they really came through for us, all the kids on the team. But I'm particularly appreciative of our A-Team, which is all coming back next year. So there were several newcomers on the team that made significant contributions, and they were always eager and willing to jump into action. So the ninth graders, these are the future mockers for the next three years. Ian Klugman, also known as Bickel. Emmy Bataglia. Chloe Fenster. Samajini. Eli Majidi. Jack Levy, Levy, and Ryan Para. So I just want to talk about one of the most important people on our team, and that's Elliot Schuman. So Elliot Schuman, you want to raise your hand? Elliot Schuman has been volunteering his time and providing us with his expertise for over 15 years. And Byram Hills has really become one of the best Mock Trial teams in Westchester, not just because of the hard work of the coaches and the kids, but the work of Elliot. He's always willing to give his time for the kids at the last minute, doing Zoom meetings. It's really an enormous amount of work and expertise that he provides this community. And I really would like to have everyone here give a loud and roaring applause to our leadership. Thank you so much, Elliot, for everything you do for these kids. And there are very few people in the United States of America that are as passionate about Mock Trial as you, and I think all of our kids know that. So the last thing I want to talk about are the kids in general and the parents. So one of the big differences over the last couple of years is that the parents have gotten very involved from the very beginning of the season, when they come watch our practice trial, through the very end. There was not one trial where there weren't at least 10 parents in the courtroom. So this is parents that also traveled all the way up to Ocean, New York to see us compete in the regionals. So at this point in time, we're going to give a big round of, let me just give directions. The kids on the team, you're going to be applauding for your parents, okay? And the parents, you're going to be applauding for your kids. So we had a great season. We're very proud of everyone, and now is the time for a big round of applause. I'm very optimistic about this team for the future. We had great seniors, and we're going to miss them, but we have a lot of great people coming back. So we were a few points short of going to the finals. This team could actually pull it off next year. So thank the seniors for their hard work and their dedication, but I'm excited to watch this team excel again next year.
Then we're going to ask you to come up, receive your certificates, and once I look at this, things are going to come. There we go. All right, so we'll ask you to.
We need all three of the coaches up here, please. They have an important job to do. Yes. You think working for free, you should not have to do these things. But you should be the first face that the students see when they come to get their. I would love to have you here to hand out certificates.
Okay, so when I call your name, come on up, and we'll start with Emily Bataglia. Jack Levy. Eli Majidi. Samuel Majidi. Jonathan Manowitz. Zachary Para. Ryan Para. Romi Schweitzer. Ashley Stengel. Aaron Stein. Amelia Will Peterson.
What happened? Are we sure we're supposed to do this? And I'm so glad we had that great conversation the other night. See if I agree. We're good. All right, and now we want parents to have an opportunity to come up and take pictures of your children behind the board. And we want to thank you for giving Byram Hills this name, right? You come to school as students, and you might actually think that you come here for the opportunities that are afforded to you. It's true, but in truth, you afford us and this community so many opportunities. So we have Martin back there too.
I'm a follower, and I don't mind.
Okay, everyone. Only look at the one taking the picture. We really, we're duct taped together to get you up.
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of quick words since I saw the team in action starting when they practiced in the lecture hall before all the tournaments started, and then throughout the tournament season. And just a few things jumped out at me. The first thing is, I plan to never need a litigation team, but if I do, you guys are the ones. You are exceptional, and I heard in so many places that you went, comments from your people in the audience, and sometimes from the judge themselves, saying, you actually do a better job than many of the people that come before this court, for real. So it's just extremely impressive what you're able to do. And then secondly, the skills that, you know, you hone throughout this process, the way you work together as a team, the amazing way you can think on your feet, because even though the case stays consistent, there were so many nuances in every tournament, you had, you know, a different twist that you had to deal with, and it was extremely impressive. And then many of you, you're just starting to, you know, morph into different roles within the case and just seamlessly, you know, going from one to the other. All very impressive. So we're just very, very proud of what you've done, and I hope that you take this experience with you when you leave Byram Hills, regardless of whether you go into the legal profession or some other profession, doesn't matter, because the skills that you learn are going to be exceptionally useful for you in anything you do. And I think you guys are going to all follow your dreams because you are outstanding people.
And at this time, we're going to release the children. You are hardly children. We are going to release the adults who have to go home and who has to write an essay by tomorrow. Okay, we've got two. Anyone have a test tomorrow? Yes, we've got three. Oh, Ashley, you have a test and an essay. Ashley wins. I hope they take the cookies, or I'm doomed. And I think we have one board member who's outside kissing her whole family goodbye.
No, I don't think so. That's Laurie. Laurie doesn't have any.
Oh, where did she go? I thought she was outside. We can keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know if you want to start by saying your name, our tenure recipients tonight. Because once I get started, you have no space. Say a pretty little something.
Tenure is a process that a lot of people don't understand. Sorry. I know you guys, most of the people in the room, understand it all too well. But it's a tremendous honor to receive tenure, and it's a process that we put a tremendous amount of thought into and work into. The team observes people over years. You know, it's not something that just sort of gets rubber stamped. It's, it is, it's a lengthy process, and it's a tremendous honor, and we are thrilled to honor the honorees tonight.
Okay, well, first, I have a challenge question for Dr. Tim Coltenacker. So surprised. So I have had to give a few speeches over the past few days, and what is the topic? What's the theme of what I've been talking about over the past few days? Mia got it. Partnerships. Partnerships. But Tim really, Tim really pays attention when I clap. Several themes. I mean, really, we talk all day, every day, and night. Yes. Toilet, we were talking about toilet training, elementary kids. Yeah, we've had a lot of conversations. But, but the theme is really partnership, and that is what tenure is about here tonight. I looked out, and one of the first people I saw when I entered the room was Rob Senlinsky. Rob Senlinsky is the head of the BHTA. He is the president. He is here tonight because he has an amazing relationship with the district. He cares that teachers have a strong relationship where they work and that they feel supported, and that they can learn and grow together. So this partnership is something that we value so much, and a teacher who reaches the level of tenure and receives tenure in this district is a person who's committed to that partnership. My predecessor used to say it was, it was like becoming a partner in a law firm, right? You are actually earning the right to be a part of making the changes that happen in the school community, which we all know, especially if you ever watch television and watch the news, is an extraordinarily different place than anywhere else. It's where people are encouraged to grow, people are encouraged to take risks, where people do not feel like failures if they say they don't understand something or they need support in a certain way. One of, one of the strongest Byram Hills teachers, I remember one time telling me, I'm kind of having a little bit of trouble, it was a high school teacher, with some classroom management. I'm wondering if you could just, like, stay outside the door and listen and see what you think is going on in there and what I can do differently? What an extraordinary teacher, right? To say that this is the area that I need some support, to be so self-reflective. And we're all so busy in our lives. Every day, I see every teacher running in with 5,000 things that you brought home last night to work on after you got home. You know, five bags coming in every day with everything that you've prepared. You go home to families, to friends, and you live a life outside of Byram Hills, but it doesn't matter. You show up every day with that same level of commitment and that smile on your face. To be a child in this school district, to grow up with professionals who care about the craft of teaching, who feel supported in a strong community of partnership, where we don't have a lot of the things that you see in other communities, divisive communities that don't support each other. What an amazing place to grow up, and what an amazing place to receive tenure and make that commitment. So tonight, it's sort of like we're all getting married, right? This is the commitment that you are making. And for our teachers here, I'd like to just talk a little bit about them. And I know I'm really far away from you, and I'm actually contemplating just taking the mic out to the audience, but I knew that Gina and Tim would say, what would you say, Gina? There she goes. There she goes. But, you know, I know that although I'm so far away, I'm really close to my garden. Regina Boda is the first person on the list tonight who will be receiving tenure. Regina, you want to take stand up for a moment? Regina teaches kindergarten, which is by far one of my favorite grades. I was just talking about kindergarten students today, and I said that when I retire, if you would have me, because it's really the hardest job, I would like to be an aide in a kindergarten classroom. But none of those kids would ever learn how to open their applesauce because I would just wreck it and want to help them because they're so adorable. And the work that you do in that class to get them to do those things that build upon skills later in life is pretty incredible. Some of these children are showing up, and they're not even potty trained yet when they first arrive to you. They come in, some are crying, some, you know, they don't understand how to get on a bus, how to go home. I mean, there's a whole world that exists down there that most people are not aware of. Regina had a little bit of practice here before she got started as a teacher. She was a teacher aide. Oh my, and so was Heather, sitting right near her. It's a little trend. So Regina was an aide at first, and then we had a leave at our other elementary school, and Regina was asked to come and take over for that teacher. It was a beloved teacher who was ill and who passed, and it was such a difficult time for this school community and the children in that class. And Regina came in, and I have to say, every child was okay, right? You came in and you spread something to those children and did something so miraculous that the pain that everybody was experiencing was something that was made brighter by your presence there. It was pretty amazing, Regina. She also then came back to Coman Hill. She was the technology guru on the kindergarten team when COVID came around and, and was very well respected for that. Another thing you're really well respected for, I don't know if you know this, but for, for your data on each child, the amount of time. I know about the binders. The amount of time that you spend on each child, looking at their progress and trying to figure out specific goals for them. When you're in the whirlwind of teaching, that is a particularly difficult thing to do. And without a quote-unquote "system" in place, we have many measures, but you've created your own system and contribute so much to what those systems should look like for the rest of us. So Regina, congratulations, and we're so proud. She's crying, I love that. Nicole Peterson. Sitting next to my former student, Veronica Peterson. Just have to give you a shout out out there. Nicole, what a pleasure it is to go into your, I know that Tim is a frequent flyer in your classroom as well, but what a pleasure it is to go into your classroom. In four years as an ICT teacher, you have had three different co-teachers in that classroom. And it's not because people come and don't want to stay, it's because your work is so good and you are so versatile that you. good and you are so versatile that you can go from one person to another in that class supporting children and have done so much to help. You have such a strong literacy content and a strong literacy background. But I think, from what I'm hearing and what I see, it's the pedagogy, right? It is the knowing how to reach each child and how to teach each child that is your greatest strength. You focus on inclusion. It doesn't matter what the learning differences are of the students in your classroom. You work with your colleagues to make sure that every child is included and feels a significant part of that class. You are the third-grade liaison, right? Oh, I gave you that title. You didn't know that existed. But you are the third-grade liaison, meaning you are going to those third-grade teachers and you are telling them who is coming and what is happening with those kids. And you're also finding out from them, what are you seeing in third grade that you think that we can further support. And having that K-12 vision for Byram Hills is pretty spectacular. So, Nicole, I am so proud of you, and congratulations. Devin, my daughter. I joke with her parents. I said, "I'm her mom at school, and I have an eye on Devin all the time." Poor Devin. No one should enter Byram Hills and have to do what Devin did. There was a little boy on the first day of school during COVID who came in with a mask on, Matthew. And he was crying. And I went to his class that afternoon to see if he was okay, and he was crying again. And I started playing with him. I don't remember what, Legos or Play-Doh or something, where we each had to have our own because you couldn't transmit the COVID disease. And I developed such a love for those kids and such a soft spot for those kids that I was in there just about every day. And Devin was like, "I'm fired." Like, why is the superintendent in my classroom every day? And it took a few weeks, but she said, "Oh, you know what I learned? You're not here to see me." I said, "No, Devin. I know you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. I'm here to see the children." And Dylan, I still follow, I mean, Devin, I still follow those COVID babies who are now in third grade, and I remember all of them. Ryan, Julia, Matthew, Sebastian, right? I mean, I could think of all of their names, just all incredible kids. Oh, Alexander, who still hugs me every time he sees me. Just a special place that you created in that class. And to be in that class and watch your strong morning routine and to watch the way your kids interact with each other, I was shocked. In the time of COVID, I would walk into your classroom, and kids knew about each other. They formed relationships at a very young age, in age in which they usually parallel play a little bit. And these kids were picking out, what do you want to be when you get older? And children in the class were saying, "Well, I know Ryan." Do you remember what Ryan wanted to be? Firefighter. "I know Ryan wants to be a firefighter." Like, the kids would talk about other kids in the classroom and what their aspirations were. And I thought that that was remarkable, specifically during that time. We also have had conversations. You've had so much training in your prior position before you came here, and you really bring us to a new level with what you know here. So, from your heart to your teaching pedagogy, I told your parents that I'm your mother at school, and I have my eye on you. And I mean that. You're fantastic. Thank you very much, Devin. Heather's mother, are you ready? You're not ready, are you? Heather, we can't see you. Wait, we can move the podium. Yeah, podium's in our way.
Unless you want to walk up on the stage.
So, when Heather was 11, I met her, and I met her mom, and Heather was a student in my class. It's a familiar story. And then Heather, as an adult, I saw her in Coman Hill one day. And I said, "Heather, what are you doing here?" And she was a teacher aide. And Heather was a certified teacher, working as a teacher aide. And we were so impressed with her. And then COVID. See, you're all my COVID babies also. COVID hit. And we said, "Heather, we have an additional class at Wampus. Why don't you give it a try? We think you're going to be spectacular." And we, Heather, we never looked back. What's happening in your class is a miracle. Tim, the jokes. Heather, can you recall the recent joke? Heather says a joke in her class, and she doesn't give the punchline. And the kids are all guessing what the punchline is. And I swear, I could be sitting in a college, in a cafeteria with kids trying to come up with creative punchlines to jokes. It's really like nothing I've ever seen before. And they're witty, super witty. And you have just risen to the level of respect from your colleagues, of respect from parents. We often, very often, get requests from parents to have their kids in your class. And coming from a time when you were once my student, I can't express to you enough how proud I am of you, of this incredible career you chose. And I just wish that you chose it before we picked you, because you would have even that many more years behind you as a teacher. But you did it, and that's great. Congratulations, Heather. We have fun Heather facts.
So, my newest one, my terror, was in Heather's class when she was an aide. And now, my oldest is an intern in her class. Sorry. My oldest is an intern in her class now. And she loves, she's loving you, and she's loving learning about--
And we love her.
--how special you are as a teacher.
You've had a lot of students that love you from this board.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And from Crittenden, Corinne DePino. Where are you, Corinne? Yay, Corinne! Try finding somebody who is special education and science certified. There's one person. And fortunately, it's Corinne, because she knows what to do at Crittenden. What a find. I mean, I never thought that I would find the right person to fit that specific need at Crittenden, and we did. Corinne, you have been tremendous. Science, special education. It's not just about that. She recognizes that children, we all know this, right? They need help with executive functioning. So, what is Corinne doing? She's doing organizational skills, study habits, and goal-setting with kids. We have such a structure at the middle school now that classroom teachers have the opportunity to take kids on as sort of a cohort. And it's something that we used to have, like advisory or something, homeroom, right? It's like taking that homeroom concept back into the world where we're trying to help kids develop very specific skills. So, I know that Kim and Angelo talk all the time about your abilities in that area. Deb is here to support you, your science chair tonight, giving you the continued encouragement to keep going. What I know about you in the classroom, though, is you pick a phenomenon and you stimulate curiosity around that phenomenon. And that is what gets kids motivated to do the work. Science, like any other subject, it could be just study these facts and relay this information. But instead of doing that, you imbue curiosity. And curiosity is what makes kids interested. And it is only when you're interested that you're actually interesting, right? So, you're teaching them the skill that, as they get older, is going to be paramount to anything else. So, I want to thank you for that. And a big shout-out for the work with Science Olympiad. I am seeing as many accolades coming from our middle school Science Olympiad as I am from perhaps maybe our science research students at the high school. The only difference is, the kids in Science Olympiad don't have those extensive impressive titles to their science research projects like the high school kids have. But give them enough time. You are breeding kids who are going to be future scientists through their inquiry. So, Corinne, thank you so much. It's Mary Beth Lanaris here. Yay! So, I happened to be at a hockey game in Budapest. I don't know where it was. It was somewhere really, really far away, far, far, far away. And I looked over, and I saw Mary Beth. I was like, "Mary Beth, what are you doing here?" Mary Beth is the biggest cheerleader to every Byram Hills student. I saw her at a play that some of our students were in a peak skill one day. It doesn't matter if it's a hockey game far away. And as a matter of fact, we've gotten to the point that when kids get to toward the state finals, we always say, "If they're going to get to the state finals, we're going to carpool together and go to the games together." So, this is a teacher who was once tenured in Byram Hills, and then I think he took, what, 13 years off or--
16.
16. 16 years off and came back to Byram Hills and is now in one of the most interesting programs that we have at the high school called the Flexible Support Program. Why is this program so important to us? And Mary Beth has been doing it for two years. Mary Beth has to worry about every single child and every single child's ability to get back into the classroom and cover the curriculum in the classroom. She's taught some subjects before, right? So, not only a resource room teacher, she's been an English 11 teacher. She's co-taught biology. So, she really has to have a mastery of all of the content areas to be able to support the kids who are in the Flexible Support Program. Not only does she do that, she is trained in DBT therapy, so she's able to help coach and support these kids to get to even greater heights than they have. We share at least one student right now, well, a few, actually, and now they give three, students of interest to the two of us, students who have sort of found their way into my heart and are coming from her class. And to watch them grow and excel this year, especially this year under your support, has been nothing short of tremendous. So, tenure twice. I couldn't be more proud of you. Thank you. And I'll see you at everything. Megan Williams. Yay, Megan! Second to last, but not least, Megan had a background at another school district before she came here. In that school district, she did everything. Remember that, like, first year you were a teacher somewhere? So, she was a college counselor. She was the admissions counselor at that school. She was the senior advisor, which really prepared her for all of the work at Byram Hills. Since coming here, I hate to read a list, but Megan, it's pretty extensive. I mean, your accomplishments actually look like a complete resume, except it's only for this one year. Megan, in our guidance department at the high school, has updated our website. She's updated our college acceptance pages. She's the jump-in advisor for the Great Activities Board when the current advisor could no longer do it. College visits that you've gone on in the past few years and networking that you've done with colleges has been so incredibly important to our high school. Challenge success, not only being a part of Challenge Success here, but also going out to the conference to really understand how can we better support school issues for our kids. Multiple webinars, I can't count how many, on college planning. Guidance discussion group presenter. Critical stress management and training. You developed the Junior Parent Night on how to use early decision wisely. Where were you before my kids went to college? That's one area I definitely messed up. Regional Crisis Response Team. You reconnected us to the University of Michigan Depression Center, which has been incredible for us ever since. I know this sounds like a list, but it is beyond what one could imagine a person has done in this year alone, let alone everything you've done in the years past. So, bringing our students to the point that they understand the options that are available to them, getting parents in, that's one thing I would say, it's also of Christina Wilson leading the charge. But getting parents in and involved at very early stages so that they understand this college process, which is daunting to them in a world where they're always wondering if they should have some special college counselor, and how are we going to understand what schools to apply to? Kids are drawn to you. Parents are drawn to you, and the department has benefited from you. So, congratulations to you. And last but not least, Christina Wilson. Christina, right on the line. I mean, we've known each other forever. You, like me, have grown up in Byram Hills, starting as a guidance counselor and working your way to the head of the guidance department. During a time where we desperately needed you, you jumped in to be an interim when we required that in that department. And that really set you on your course, and you've never stopped since. You have a legacy here. Something that is going to live here longer than you or I will is how you have set up academic advising. There are like these three pillars. Academic advising, it's about college counseling, and it's also about the social-emotional needs of kids. And that is something that I would say, prior to you, our guidance department maybe wasn't focused on, because at the time, it didn't seem like we needed to worry as much about students' social-emotional health. But with all of the work at the Michigan, at University of Michigan Depression Center, through Stanford Challenge Success, you've pulled all of that into the guidance department and not in a way that sacrificed our goals of high achievement for our kids. High achievement doesn't just mean getting into the very best college. It means getting into the very best college for you. And you have been instrumental in doing that. Also, updates, the advisor newsletter, the steering committee, the Challenge Success, everything you've done, the work with Megan on reconnecting us with the University of Michigan. I just hope you don't leave. Are you happy here? Very? Very? Good. Okay, good. We want you to stay forever.
I'm going to put you on the spot.
We're putting you right on the spot. I have witnesses, you're never leaving. But you've really done so much for that department and so much for the children who are in that department. And you are steering us on a course and a path that has been nothing but extraordinary. So, thank you so much, Christina. And I think that's it for our tenure candidates. Can you raise your hand if you're here in support of our tenure candidates as a family member? Oh, watch. As family members. Yes. Thank you. That means that sometimes they go home and they're not paying attention to you because they're thinking about us. And we want you to know how much we appreciate that and the time that they give to Byram Hills, maybe sometimes instead of at all. How about if your colleagues here to support? Thank you, everyone. And I don't, I think they should go home. Let the adults go home. Okay, so, listen. You have 11 hours if you work at the high school and 12 hours if you work in any of the other schools. All right? Thank you so much for coming, everyone. Yes, we're going to take a five-minute break. Please take the cookies. Take the cookies.
Special report, please. Special report, please. Number three, curriculum conversation with mathematics.
Thank you, everyone. So, tonight, we are having a State of the Department meeting. You recalled that in October, you meet with all the administrators, and we talk about our administrative goals. But this is an opportunity to dive deeply. So, we rotate through the academic departments regularly so we can go a little deeper and allow the chairpersons to have an opportunity to really talk in depth about the goals that they're working toward and show some of our data in our analysis of how we're doing. So, I'm happy to have Lisa here tonight.
Glad to be here. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. It was, though, the new Algebra I Regents exam was today, so Lisa will talk a little bit about that and talk about how many times we've changed standards in mathematics and assessments. It's been many times.
Or they've been changed on us.
They've been changed on us. We have not changed that. State has changed those. So, thanks for that clarification. So, I'm just going to turn it right over to Lisa. She'll jump in. Please feel free to jump in if you have any questions. This is meant to be a discussion, so feel free to interrupt us as Lisa goes through her brief presentation.
We do have a brief time for audience participation, which is exciting for everyone.
Yeah, I told her that it was really successful the last time I gave you a math problem. So, she has one for you. So, get ready for it.
I did also ask him if I could hold the mic, but I think he heard that if someone gives me a mic, that I never give it back. So, I was forced to use one I was in the stand here. So, thank you to everyone for allowing me to chat with you tonight. I'm starting again with the mission of the district, which I think everyone is familiar with, but I use it just to go side by side with our essential question for the mathematics department, which you've also seen from our goals document over the summer and throughout the year. Our goal is really to empower students. So, that's the key word I would pull out of that essential question. We are looking to empower students with mathematics and to be able to use math to justify, to rationalize, and to present an argument. So, our department goals-- So our department goals, our first one, I'm actually going to table because I have a whole slide dedicated to that, it's around Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics, which is the book you have before you. Our second goal this year was to develop through mathematical habits and improve feedback system for students through specifically using this book and formative assessment methodologies to help engage and provide actionable feedback to students. The third, again, also aligned with the book, is to support student engagement in nonroutine problem solving. We always say in the math department, if you're gonna go into engineering, no one is going to tell you exactly how to build a bridge, that's going to be for you to figure out, and so it's important for our students to get exposure to tasks that they've been shown to do, but also ones that push their thinking. As Tim mentioned, we also planned for and have incorporated our changes to the next-gen standards, so last year was the switch-over for our middle school program, and this year was the switch-over for eighth and ninth grade for the revised, yet again, Algebra I standards for the next-gen standards. And then last but not least is the use of our data-driven instruction and fostering community relationships. So data-driven is around really taking a look at the student data that includes both assessment data as well as student feedback to help inform our instruction. And in terms of the community, really making sure that we're candid and open and honest with the community members. I know we get feedback in terms of acceleration process where parents have a lot of questions for it, and so we're really making a concerted effort to make sure that we're available and transparent and open with the community about that process and questions that they might have. So this book has formed the basis of our work for the past two years. I figured you would want your own copy because you're gonna go home and read it cover to cover tonight, it is a thrilling read. I first got introduced to this book through Bosie's Math Chairs Circle, and it was really in like a passing comment at a meeting. And I went home and I ordered the book off Amazon, and I read it cover to cover, and I said, wow, this is really great. I'm gonna order some for the department. And when I say I'm gonna order some, what that really meant was I emailed Tim and I said, hey, Tim, do you by any chance have some funds that we could use to purchase this book for the department? And Tim was very kind and very supportive. And what was interesting was on the exact same day that I sent this email to Tim, I got an email about two hours later from Jill Burner, one of our eighth-grade teachers, and she said, I just finished reading this fabulous book, Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. It's mind-blowing, and I can't wait to try the things in the classroom. Do you think this is something we should discuss as a department? And I said, well, Jill, you're one step ahead of me. So thank you, Jill, and thank you to the department to being open to looking through this book. There are some really, really fabulous tools, techniques, I've heard from teachers, that this book has transformed their teaching, even just small changes have made transformative differences in their classroom. Some of the big highlights are vertical, non-permanent surfaces, so what does that mean? Well, the highlight there is really on the fact that it's vertical and it's non-permanent, so the author here, Peter Liljedahl, researched a variety of different ways for students to show work in classroom. Horizontal would be students are doing it on their desk, vertical is on the wall, some with notebook, other means, and what he found through his research was that the student engagement and student retention of the material was highest when the students put their work vertically on the walls of the classroom, whether that was on the whiteboard, something that was non-permanent, to allow the students to noodle, to brainstorm, to erase, and to try again. Another one of the techniques that he advocates is randomized grouping. This really has been, I will say, in terms of teacher moves, something that I think as teachers, we were all really sure that we were really good at grouping students, that we had put so much thought into it, maybe the perfect groups, and how could randomized grouping be better, because we had put so much effort into creating the absolute best groups? And then we randomized it, and we found, oh my gosh, this is really great, because the students don't feel like they're in a particular role in a group, meaning they don't feel like they're always taking a backseat or someone else is always driving it, they really like that they have the opportunity to work with different friends, different folks in the classroom. And interestingly, they also like it because sometimes they may not want to work with their friends during that period, because they think their friends might distract them, and this is a nice way for them to kind of just say, well, the groups were chosen for me. Next is the curricular and non-curricular rich tasks. I'm gonna pause on that because I have a whole slide dedicated to that, and I know I've talked to folks about that, but I can't talk about it enough. And then the last, who are really surrounding using assessment not just to assess kids but for learning purposes and to help fuel their learning going forward for that year and for the years following. We actually had an interesting situation occur the other day with a student that was asking about their finals and what is the time period for students to come in to take a look at their finals, because we've made such a big fuss about using assessment for learning, that shouldn't the same thing apply to finals. So that was kind of a really cool statement to hear from kids, that they're thinking about it on their own for their own assessments. And then lastly, the teacher as a facilitator of learning experiences. It's no longer kind of a stage-on-the-stage situation, but we're really there to craft a learning experience that is suited for each individual child that's in the classroom based on their readiness at that moment. If you look at the line on the bottom in terms of what BTC advocates, I put it there mainly because I think everything that's there really aligns well with our goals. Looking at critical thinking, looking at collaboration, looking at problem solving, it's all there and it's all here. So we really, we love this book, it's fabulous, and since then, I can tell you, it's been the topic of every Bosie's Chairs meeting that we've had, and it's really created quite a buzz in the math community, so if you are with folks and you wanna seem really hip, you could just ask them, have you tried the latest BTC strategy? And then just see what they say.
Lisa, let me ask you if, I know Liljedahl has done his own research and writes a lot about his own research practices, and I'm wondering to what degree do his practices align with some other research-based and evidence-based pedagogical practices? Do you know that?
Absolutely. So what's really great is it's not just that he kind of thought of things that he thought might be effective in the classroom. So he went into over 40 different schools over several years to study these methods, but the methods that he chose were in and of themselves research-based. So for example, if you flip into chapter three, talking about those vertical boards that I mentioned before, you'll see all sorts of citations through there of work of other folks in the industry over the past 30 years, using that as the rationale for why that particular strategy would work. Any other questions on the Building Thinking Classrooms? So another thing that is in the book that is also supported by our work, I think over the past eight years now with our consultant, is around rich tasks. So rich tasks, we say, are low-floor, high-ceiling, meaning that any student can enter them at any level. It allows students to delve deeper into mathematics, whether you are entering at the floor or entering at the ceiling. We used to say they were open-ended, but then we realized that was kind of a misnomer, because sometimes it's the start that's open and you might end at the same place. Sometimes the start and the end might be the same, but the middle is different in how you get there, or sometimes you start in the same place, but you might end up in a different area. So what is really there is a flexibility in thinking and flexibility in approach, and I think you'll see that in some of our data that we'll provide here. Also important is multiple representations of mathematics. I know that a lot of parents, when they sit down with their children, and they say, why can't we just do math like we used to? What happened to the old math, or the good math, or the bad math? And I can tell you, as a teacher of, you know, kind of the end-of-the-train AP Calculus, there is absolutely a rhyme and a reason and a rationale as to why things are taught the way they're taught. And also, one size doesn't fit all, and I think that's the most important thing about mathematics education, is that what one person receives and one person hears and one person sticks with might not be the same for someone else. And so a lot of times, students do need to hear things differently, be presented material differently, and you might say to yourself, well, that seems like a really inefficient way of doing a particular problem, and you would be right. It might be inefficient, but for that moment, that's fine. And eventually, the student is going to be able to recognize when and where that is appropriate or when and where something else might be needed.
Is it fair to say that not every day and every activity and every lesson is inefficient? We also are often working, we are also working on efficiency in mathematics.
Absolutely. So our goal is kind of going back to that essential question of thinking about and justifying why you might choose a particular avenue. Is it that it is efficient for that particular problem, but then there might be another one where it actually is quite the opposite? So even within one standard, you might have one way that is efficient and kind of lends itself to one thing, whereas another method lends itself to another type. And then this last one is really our favorite term, it's mathematical residue, meaning that the math kind of stays on you for long periods of time, and that's really what makes the task rich, because we can pull from it for the remainder, not only of the here, but of years to come. You will see our folks in middle school are always talking about tasks and ones that students will start with in sixth grade, teachers will mention in seventh grade and eighth grade, and the students remember it. It's really an emotional learning experience for them, and it allows us to pull from it for years to come. So this is where we get to the fun part. Do not look at Rob Senwinski for the answers to this question, Rob, because he has given this question many times. So this would be an example of a rich task given to students, let's say, on the first days of school. And we would say something like, this represents a number system, and we just want you to look at it and think of some wonderings, think of some noticings, then we might push you to think about what numbers come next and how they might be represented. So for example, I might say, I have a noticing that each number has a different number of circles in there. So this is where the audience participation comes in.
I noticed.
Thank you, Sam.
There's one more on each one.
One more on the 28.
Okay. What's that, Tom?
One to 28.
One to 28.
Okay. So then if you said, as a student in the class, it's one to 28, my teacher might move, might be, what do you think 29 would be?
What would you represent?
Right, how would you represent it?
So. She got your thinking, Kelly.
Right.
A circle with an extra one, right? Similar to the ring, I would do.
So then my teacher move at that point might be something like, Jason, what do you think about Kelly's thoughts? Do you feel like he's...
No comment.
You can't get away with that in a classroom, I'm like...
And so this is how the dialogue would go. Now, really, what's hidden in here is a variety of both our curricular and non-curricular pieces. So there's a relationship to the number system, there's a relationship to factors, so that would be something that's specific to the content, but then there's also this relationship to our general math habits of fostering creativity and a willingness to just put yourself out there and to make conjectures. I say to students all the time, and again, I'm at the kind of end of the train line in math, but we are all born mathematicians. As children, we recognize patterns, and that is really math in its most basic form. You are presented something, let's say, in a pre-K program, that's blue, blue, red, blue, blue, red, and then they'll say blue, blue, and ask the child, what is the next color, and they'll say red. Now, I could ask that same question in a BC Calc class, but I might put a twist on it, say, well, how do you know it's blue, blue, red, blue, blue, red, blue, blue, orange, blue, blue, red, right? It's really all about pattern matching and just looking for patterns and noticing and wondering and making a conjecture, and then seeing if that conjecture is correct.
So Lisa, let me ask this question about rich tasks, which I've seen many of in classrooms and have watched students engage in them, is I'm wondering, what type of data do you collect from, and can you collect data from the way students engage in rich tasks? I think of two things. I think of the math content that grows out of the rich task, and then I think of the learning habits that we're instilling in students as well. And are those both measurable through this type of work?
It's a great question. So we have a lot of data that we have looked at and that we are planning to look at. We do take a look, so if you look at any of the teacher notes for these rich tasks, we have folders and folders full of annotations, and just to give you a sneak peek of our HCC data story, we have an entire data story around this with teacher annotations for each of the rich tasks given across the grades and kind of adjustments that have been made and observations in terms of the content and how we feel the students have done. We do informal assessments, such as exit tickets or just kind of small check-ins to see how students are doing, and then obviously, we also look across year to year to see how we're performing on our state tests as well.
So I'll be showing the board in the fall. The middle school's been working on data reports in the academic departments. I've talked to the board before that we've been grappling with ways that we can look at non-state test data, or at least in concert with state test data, and how we can create a story around how our students are performing, and all of the academic chairs have been working on that over the past few years under Kim Lappel's leadership and Angela O'Conna's leadership. So we'll be sharing those data reports in the fall as part of my assessment reports. Very excited to share what they've been working on, it's exciting.
Kelly, did you notice anything else? I saw you writing the number six over. I was picking on...
I was just grouping them.
See?
Well, I realize that 29 is an odd number, so you can't group it in...
So 29...
29 has to be a circle.
Circle, right, Mia? Because what did I say?
See, if you said to me it has to be, I would turn back to you and say, what do you think?
And then I saw Kelly. It's true, this is how the rich task gets them.
And this is...
Absolutely.
You can see what kids, kids will talk about these tasks. I know Rob can talk about it. They'll be walking down the halls arguing about these tasks and thinking about them later, and that's sort of what's exciting about it, is leading math class with this type of...
And Peter has a whole chapter around the types of questions that you ask and allow students to ask in class. So he's a really big proponent of not answering stop-thinking questions. So a student by nature will wanna know if they're right about something, but the problem inherent in that question is it's a stop-thinking question, because once a student has affirmed that they're right, they tend to shut down and not explore additional methods. So that's why kind of the teacher move is to say, you know, I don't know, what do you think? Or, do you know what you think about what Kelly just said? You know, start-thinking questions or keep-thinking questions as opposed to stop-thinking questions. So here we have some pictures from our students. So on the left are our students involved in a rich task related to origami that also in terms of content would relate to proportional reasoning, but they really, they loved this task, they were super engaged with it. It was one of, I think, our most popular ones for seventh grade. And then on the right, we have the string shape task, which, this was a challenge for students, because they had to create a variety of different 3D shapes that they were given on paper, right? So they're taking a two-dimensional image and constructing it into three dimensions, and they had to use the exact amount of string that was there, so none left over and none needed. So it's a task like this that really gets at the heart of our problem solving and perseverance, because a lot of times, kids will say, ah, I can't get it, I can't get it, but with a little encouragement and a little bit of just kind of working through it, they do. And then they're really proud of themselves, so, cool to see. Here's another one that comes from our sixth grade, so I put this up here because what you see are three very different ways of approaching the same problem. You have one that's a two-dimensional view, just kind of on pen and paper, you have another one kind of in a little bit more of a three-dimensional with some Post-its stuck in there, and then another one still with different blocks. I can tell you, this is also a cool task, one because of the different representations, but also because this task is about a rate problem, which would be pretty common for a sixth-grade curriculum. But then going down the line into the AP Calculus curriculum, you would see this idea come back again in what we call related rates problems. So it's sixth grade, you have a rate that's constant, and then calculus, all about change, in the study of change, you have these rates that are changing as time goes on. So it really, all of math really just builds on itself year after year, and we think that's cool.
We won't ask you a related rate problem right now.
Yes.
Maybe at the next board meeting.
So how do we go about designing the curriculum for each of these classes? So as Tim mentioned, we do have the state, which will inform a lot of our instruction. We are, since 2000, I think, on our fourth, would you say, different curriculum from New York State? So we went from the sequential system into the Math A and Math B, and there were some more changes within Math A and Math B, and then integrated algebra, and then Algebra I to become a core, and now, as Tim said, this was our first year with Algebra I for next gen. So we are constantly evolving based on how the state is changing our standards for each particular course. But then within a course, our teachers meet constantly to dis... But then within a course, our teachers meet constantly to discuss the curriculum, to discuss the pacing. In the middle school, we have obviously the team time, so those folks are together all of the time, kind of on a day-by-day basis. In the high school, we're fortunate to have our math office with a giant round table in the middle that we love to kind of all sit at and geek out and talk about math all of the time. And so you'll just constantly hear people checking in, saying, where are you? What did you get to in this lesson? Should we make changes? If I could say anything about the math department, we course correct. We will course correct from year to year, we will course correct from period to period. You will see a lesson that goes on second period, and if we didn't like something, we're not going to give the same lesson seventh, we're going to make a change and see if we can make it a better experience for our students.
So you make course corrections on that sort of micro level, then what about a macro level? So at what point do you, the department, sit back and look at your assessment data, reflect on the year, look at standards alignment, look at feedback from students? What does that point mean?
So I think we're fortunate that the department is quite active in the summer. And we're kind of, you know, like a little family, and we get together and we discuss the curriculum. We discuss things that went well, we discuss changes that might need to be made. We take a nice look at all of any of the final assessments, so Regents data, final exam data. The teachers will sit with each other on those assessments, and then I will also pull that data and take a look at it as well, both from a year-to-year perspective as well as teacher-to-teacher. And then we'll sit down and discuss that as well. I think one of the reasons we do that, in addition to kind of just the geeking out of the math, is that math is really foundational. So it is unlike perhaps English where if you read a book and maybe you didn't like the book or it just didn't resonate with you, you might move on to another book. But with math, whether, you know, for good or for bad, we just don't have that luxury because math is constantly building on itself. And so we really are making a concerted effort all the time to make sure that students are understanding the material because we feel we have that fidelity both to the students and the students' future experience in the years to come.
Lisa, I'm noticing you have SAT and ACT content on that slide. And I'm wondering for the student who is entering high school in algebra and goes through more of a typical sequence, will, when will they be prepared for the SAT and ACTs? Will they be prepared in time for when they usually take them?
Absolutely. So as we did that, again, revision for the Algebra I this year with our new standards, we went back and made sure and did an alignment again of our kind of on-level progression with those standards against the SAT and the ACT to make sure that we were mapping out all of the standards and where they are in that freshman, sophomore, and junior year sequence. What's interesting about the SAT is actually the majority of that material students will learn by the end of their sophomore years. It comes primarily from algebra and from geometry, but we are hearing from colleges that they strongly prefer students to take it middle to the end of the junior year because they're looking for more recent achievement data in which to help base their decisions on. But absolutely, that data is looked at. And then something that's coming down the pipe that I know we have heard some feedback during principals' coffees about is the new SATs. So this is going to be a pretty big change for math and for our students. The first thing is that the decimals technology, which if you're not, if you really want to geek out, then you should really play with decimals. It's just fabulous, to call it a graphing tool would be an understatement, but you can really get an amazing picture of pretty much any function. And that is now directly built into the exam for students to use. The questions now are also adaptive, so based on how you do on the first module will dictate the questions that you will get on the second module. In total, there's a shorter testing time with fewer questions. Now, the content is the same, but what we do is we take a look year after year. And we do this, we have a lot of spreadsheets in math, we really like spreadsheets. So we have spreadsheets for different exams just to notice trends that are happening. Now, for the SAT and the ACTs, we can't look at particular questions as we can for the Regents and for the AP tests, but we definitely look at trends to say, are we seeing a certain topic come up more or come up less? And that's definitely something that you see. So I think our Algebra I test today is a testament to the fact that we have a spreadsheet going back about a decade now on every single question that was ever asked on a New York State Algebra I Regents. When it was asked, how often it was asked, and how many points it was worth. And we use that to inform our instruction. We don't sleep, was that going to be a question?
No, I do have two questions. One, if we could go back a second to the standards.
Absolutely.
So over how many years have the standards changed? Four times. And do you see a rationale for that change in the standards? I know it's annoying to look at new standards X number of times over X number of years, but are you seeing a trajectory whereby they are advancing the concept that they are creating the standards for?
So the standards have changed since 2000, they have changed four times. So it's been roughly once every six years that we've changed as a department. I will say, I think each time that New York State switches the standards, it's a little bit of a whack-a-mole situation in that they're trying to address one issue through a new curriculum, but then another one inherently pops up. So for example, the Math A and Math B was an attempt to really give students a holistic approach to math, where it wasn't kind of like this linear sequential thing. It was, okay, we're going to kind of talk about a bunch of different topics together, and we're going to call it Math A, and that's going to be a year and a half, and then we're going to do the same thing with Math B, that's going to be a year and a half. But what that ended up yielding was just a lot of confusion on the part of students and an inability to really have a solid foundation. And so they switched from that into integrated algebra, which looked more like what you would have experienced, you know, before that in a sequential program, trying to get at students at that kind of foundational Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II. The Common Core came along, and I think as someone that sees the end result, I can certainly appreciate, I think the Common Core was attempting to really get students thinking differently and in different ways about math. I think that sometimes that maybe that messaging got lost nationally, not just in New York, in terms of why the Common Core was there. And I think a lot of folks felt, it's just changing math, and, you know, why are they making these changes? And so now that we have the Next Gen, and that's getting implemented in math as well as other subjects, I know science makes that change next year. I think they're looking again to maybe just make some adjustments. And then there is some shift in the content that we're seeing. So our students, I think, are probably a little bit different than the majority of students nationwide in that our students are really looking to culminate in pre-calculus and calculus senior year. And the types of schools that they're going to are really looking for that culmination. That's probably a little different than, you know, to be honest, the majority of schools that are going to end in something that's more of an Algebra II trade than statistics. So you see some of those shifts happening earlier on because that's the end goal for some of those other schools. Some of it might be just that they feel statistics might be more reachable for students. But for our students, I think they've really looked for that, that pre-calculus and calculus.
And my next question is, might be naive, but when you have on this SAT adaptive questions with the second module being based upon the success with the first module?
Yes.
I just see so much difficulty in that. I mean, there are kids who might excel at the level of the second module. I don't quite understand how that's going to be advantageous to kids.
So my understanding is that they have two second modules. So essentially that you take this first module, and then based on that module, you branch into one of two second modules, but still have a variety of questions within them. But essentially, the floor and the ceiling of each module will be different. So there'll be one module with maybe a lower floor and a lower ceiling, and then a second module with a higher floor and a higher ceiling. If I had to guess the college board's, you know, thought process behind it, I think that they're trying to...
Track kids right after the first module?
You know, I think they're trying to...
It sounds like to me, right?
You know, I think they're really trying to be relevant in their own learning. By doing this...
It's great if it's a... I think it's great if it's a test that is going to be used to help you learn new content and move on from there, but I almost wonder if it's... I'm curious to see how this impacts our kids.
Absolutely.
Of course, it's to defeat the purpose of a standardized test.
Yeah.
The whole point of standardized tests is that everybody's doing the same thing, so you can...
You can standardize it.
I'm wondering how the score reporting is different then.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see for that.
We have a lot of...
It's interesting, right?
It'd have great benefits, but I'm just curious about it.
I think it's healthy to have that skepticism. I think it's interesting that they made these changes at the same time that a lot of schools were going test optional. You know, correlation is not always causation, but, you know, sometimes if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck and cracks like a duck, it might still be a duck. And so I think that, like I said, I think a part of it is their attempt to, you know, remain in the discussions for college. And I think that might be part of their driving force. So now, this is our most recent change. In addition to the Next Gen standards, we have shifted to allow our students all the opportunity to take algebra within one year. So this replaces our previous expanded algebra program. So our newly revised sequence is now a Regents Algebra in the first year, a Regents Geometry, and then a Regents Algebra II. This actually solved a couple of problems with one step. The most notable is that in the old system, our students could not earn full NCAA credit, no matter how much we tried to talk with, Cajole lobbied the NCAA folks. They just, they just didn't budge. And now we're proud to say that we were able to allow students to earn full NCAA credit for all of these classes. And then the second thing in a lot of conversations with Christina Wilson, just in terms of what colleges are looking for, and again, for our population, they are looking for colleges that are looking for exposure to more math than those students who are getting an opportunity to take. So this is allowing them to complete higher-level classes that are more aligned with that college readiness. So Tim and I, I think, from the start with our math program, had the idea of more math for more students, and I think this aligns with that. So taking a look at our performance, I know some of this data you will have seen before. So most notably, I'm sure this looks familiar from Tim's presentation in the start of the year when he talked with you about the three-through-eight testing. You know, we are proud of the work that our students have done, both on standardized tests as well as what we see in the classroom. Our teachers have worked tirelessly, like I said, course correcting at every moment. And the same goes for Algebra I. That, you know, if anybody knows anything about the Algebra I test, that tends to be a gatekeeper for a lot of New York State students and really the decider of whether or not a student will graduate. And so we've been proud of the results we've been able to achieve for our students and for, that our students have been able to get that confidence. It's really great. Our impetus for that change to the acceleration really came down to this one statistic, which was that in the old acceleration model, one in five students in the accelerated program, that's important, in the accelerated program, were earning a C, D, or F by the time they finished 11th grade. And so Tim and I, through many years and many conversations, really thought through, you know, that there's something about that that doesn't feel right. And so we started taking a look at changes, incorporating the teachers into the discussion and thinking about what we could do in terms of that acceleration change. So has the change been successful? Well, I think that's a difficult question, but hopefully some of this data will provide some clarity. So instead of one in five, we have one in 16 students, and that scoring is C. So in terms of the D and F, that has been reduced down to zero, which we're proud of. And then you can also see from the chart that's at the bottom, we have, you know, essentially half of the accelerated students earning that A or A+. So from our standpoint, the data is definitely supporting the trend that the revised acceleration model is working. We're obviously always fine-tuning it and always course correcting, but I think that we're on the right path.
Lisa, the one in 16 that scored a C in math by 11th grade, is that by 11th grade from 8th grade?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, by, and then including that 11th grade timeframe.
If I can remind the board what we changed in 2018, going into 19, that was, we revisited our accelerated pathway. So we shifted back when students would get accelerated. So instead of starting acceleration in 7th grade, we pushed it back to 8th grade. We felt like we needed more time to build foundational skills with students, that that would strengthen their foundation. And then we created another pathway, so it wasn't that the only time to get accelerated would be in 8th grade. But then students could wait till the end of 9th grade and have another opportunity to accelerate. So we built in another, we delayed acceleration a year and then built in another opportunity for acceleration. Our goal was to create stronger foundations and then have students perform better who were accelerated so that they can then be ready for upper-level mathematics. And we're seeing that in the grades as one metric.
What about the AP test results? I mean, it's a little bit difficult because it's everybody's taking their senior year, so we don't think that'd be a perfect data point, but what do you see?
The AP scores have stayed pretty consistent. I think it was, was it Bill Donahue, his, our former superintendent and former principal at the high school, used to say, you should have an equal number of ones as fives so that you know you're letting in enough students, right? So that it's not just that we're cherry picking and only taking, you know, a certain number of kids and that's it. I think Tim and I both look at placement criteria, whether it's for APs or otherwise, not as a yes or a no, but really as to force a spread and for us to be able then to look and say, okay, we have, you know, high levels of confidence, medium levels of confidence in terms of, you know, if a student would be successful in a particular course.
In other words, Scott, we also want to let more students have that opportunity for calculus. So it's hard to just look at, say, the mean score in calculus over time and make value judgments because we're allowing more students opportunities, which could be, if you're letting more students, then maybe your average goes down, but more students are exposed to the coursework, which the college board says is a good thing. Even sitting in the class, you benefit from being with a peer group and having that type of exposure.
And I will tell you an interesting trend that is happening, especially in the past couple of years. I don't think it is just specific to mathematics, I do think it extends to other disciplines. Colleges are not as willing to allow credit now for AP tests. And if they are allowing a score, it is usually for placement, but not for credit. And so that does sometimes change the calculus in a student's mind in terms of how much time or effort they're going to put just for that one particular exam. Because I think the colleges would rather see the students taking the coursework there as opposed to the high school level.
And then I guess the question with the new system compared to the way it used to be, so it's all about trade-offs. Clearly, there's a big positive to have that extra spot to accelerate kids. And then I guess the trade-off is that in middle school and in the high school, at least in 9th grade, 7th grade for short, there's a wider range of abilities in the same class. So if you talk a little bit about the challenge of that and how to, you know, potentially manage that and what you've found positives and negatives.
If I could just start, as I said, we anticipated that and when we were making that shift, we actually delayed when we made that shift so we could do more training with teachers and writing a curriculum. Lisa can talk in more details about it, but we knew we had to make sure we got that right. So students were challenged in 7th grade and in 9th grade appropriately and supported as well, or else the whole system wouldn't survive if we didn't build that capacity.
And now, oh, sorry.
Is this the one in 16 students, is that in the accelerated pathway or in any math class?
No, that's in the accelerated pathway. So just wanted to make it an apples-to-apples comparison. So it was accelerated pathway prior and then accelerated pathway after the change. Yes.
By the time, by the time certain students are accelerated from 9th grade, right, after 9th grade?
Yep.
And other students, are they put in classes still with the students who have already taken geometry? Are they mixed in?
So it depends on when a student would move down and how they would move down. So I would say if students, we always encourage students, like if you're going to go through the A pathway, there's really maybe three times that you would really want to evaluate whether or not you're going to kind of take it with a long hur. The first is really going into the program coming from 7th to 8th grade. That's a big jump. I think a lot of students find that that Algebra I A course is quite challenging. It's fast-paced and it goes deeper, and it really sets the tone for what that A pathway is going to be for the remainder of their high school career. The second really big point comes at the end of 10th grade. So I always encourage students, if you're going to make a change, that's really the time to make it. Now, some students decide to make it earlier. Is it the intent of our pathways? Not necessarily, but will accommodate, you know, I always say, I never want to hold a student hostage in a class. I would encourage students to kind of go through it for two years because at that point, I think you have a solid kind of base, and then you're moving into a pre-calculus and it seems more of a natural transition point. Whereas earlier, you know, I would hate to see a student kind of close that door, and a lot of students do take time to mature. Even within that advanced pathway, a lot of maturation happens in 9th and 10th grade. And you see some students that are... Um, and you see some students that are, are really just completely different students within a matter of a year. Um, but that said, some students are gonna say to themselves, you know what? I'm planning on going into science research into 10th grade. I know that's gonna eat up a tremendous amount of my time, but it's something I'm really passionate about and at the end of the day, I only have so many hours and I, I really just don't think that I can, uh, can handle it. When students move at that point, it's almost always from the student, um, not from the teacher because the student just feels at that point, they have too many other things that are pulling at their time and they just don't feel like they can, can balance at all.
So my other part of that question is, if someone advances after freshman year and they take Algebra freshman year, then are they not, they're not getting a whole year of geometry, which is important to me, so to be honest with you.
So the, the trick within, so this is a, this was a big question for Tim and I when we were naming the course. So there's actually quite a bit of geometry in the course, but we couldn't put the word geometry in the course name because if we did have students that moved down, our feedback from parents and also from working with guidance was that it would look encumbrous for students that are moving down because then it would look like they were taking a geometry class twice. So that's why prima facie it might look like, oh, they're skipping geometry. But actually in that two-year sequence, a solid, I would say, you know, two-thirds of that first year is geometry-based.
Can we describe the courses and when we're submitting transcripts to colleges so they could read the description of it and know what the content is?
I've been asked this question and I, I don't know if we have the answer for it, but I've been asked, is it possible to ever give like an on-level algebra class, not an accelerated algebra, an eighth grade and then geo, you know, on-level, you know, regular, but not accelerated, again, not, uh, you know.
Just to repeat it for.
Get to, because even if you're, I understand we're getting, those other kids do get to, um, the, the geometry and they accelerate, I mean, yeah, the geometry there if they accelerate later, but you're still not completing everything by the end of junior year. So you're really taking the ACT and SAT starting in your senior year, I suppose. But so that was my question, if it's possible to do on-level.
But those, so that actually you would, you would still hit that curriculum at that same place, whether you were in the old model or the new model.
Right.
That curriculum still would be complete by junior year, if not earlier if you're talking.
But I'm so sorry, the, the beginning question is the algebra, geometry and.
So that's something we're always looking at. Um, I know that the eighth grade teachers right now are interested in maybe trying to figure out a way to recognize the students, for example, that are in eighth grade that are, are really taking charge of doing that extension work. Um, and maybe a formal recognition, uh, of that work. So we're always looking at that. There's obviously always this kind of constant tension in terms of just staffing in a number of sections and really making sure that we're, we're best meeting the needs of the students that are there. But we're definitely looking at it as something that going forward, is there a way for us to kind of pull that, uh, that recognition back into the system?
That's great.
Thanks. Did I, I feel like there were a lot of questions, but now I don't know if I got all of them. So I think the only thing to circle back to is just in terms of the algebra and, and what we're seeing in terms of last year to this year. Um, so this is just one quarter in particular. I pulled the third quarter because that is the quarter A that's most recent. And, and B, that contains, uh, kind of more of a heavy lifting within algebra. That's when students really start to typically struggle. So what this graph is, is so on the bottom, which you'll see is just grade, uh, A plus down to F. And then on the, uh, vertical axis, you have the percent of students achieving those. And then the blue, which is all of the left-hand most, uh, for each grade, is last year's data. Um, and then I know Scott had asked about just addressing the, that very wide group of students that are now in the Algebra One, uh, class. We've made a concerted effort this year to do a lot of flexible, uh, grouping and arrangements with students to be able to best meet their needs because we are seeing such a wide, uh, range of abilities and range of backgrounds coming into that class. So what we're seeing in terms of year to, to year, you can see that the blue from last year, um, a nice jump in terms of the A plus and the A and the percent of students that are achieving, uh, those scores. And then conversely, on the right-hand side, um, we had no students this year in quarter three, um, with a, a D or an F. So again, right now, we're seeing the data supporting it. Um, now, do we just look at grade data? Absolutely not. Um, we are, as I mentioned, uh, for the middle school with the data story, looking to survey students. So we did the same thing with the algebra students as well. Um, we did a little bit more of an informal survey in the fall and then more of a formal one recently. I think we've gotten roughly half the freshmen. We're, we're still plugging away to see if we can get some more responses. Um, but I kind of separated these into, you know, more warm and cool. I would say overwhelmingly, the students, uh, had a lot of positive response, but also some really good feedback for us that we're going to consider as we, as we continue this. So the biggest theme that came across from the students is they really liked hearing multiple perspectives on the material. Um, a lot of times, students may just not resonate with a particular teacher or a particular lesson or a particular way of explaining things and hearing someone else explain it a different way, um, can be powerful for them. Uh, they liked the times that we switched up, um, and they got to work with folks that kind of were gonna go at the same speed as them through a particular assignment. They didn't feel rushed. They didn't feel like, oh, this person is kind of just climbing ahead. Um, and they liked really just kind of seeing different environments and different teachers. But obviously with every change, um, there's, there's good and bad. And like I said, for the math department, I think we really do pride ourselves on trying to continuously course correct. Um, and this is certainly another example of that. So we're gonna continue to get feedback, but some of the things that we have, have seen so far that, uh, we would like to course correct, um, are just in terms of, you know, students, where they're going and how often they're going, just recognizing that we are working with freshmen and some freshmen are great about being able to kind of just know every day where they're going. Um, and, you know, some freshmen are, that's not working for them as much. And so we just want to make sure that we're supporting them. Uh, we got some great feedback about potentially having like a weekly schedule instead of a, a daily schedule that's sent out to the students. Um, so that's something to certainly look into. We're noodling on maybe like a home, kind of home teacher with kind of grouping within that, um, that maybe occurs like the start of a unit and the end of the unit are always with your home teacher, um, with folks maybe pushing into the class. And then in the middle, we kind of flexibly regroup based off of, of what the students are needing in that moment. So so far, like I said, we've been able to get some really good feedback from students. Um, hoping if anybody is freshman and they haven't filled out the survey, it's still live. Um, you know, and it will still be out there for the, for the rest of the year. Um, and we, we would really love anybody that's watching as well, um, to, to give us feedback because I think we're, we're a pretty candid department. We're certainly candid with each other. Um, and so if we see an opportunity to improve, we would love to take that.
I bet if you offered a bonus point, that'd go. Yeah, you just dangle a little.
Are you reaching out to the parents for feedback or just the students?
That's a great question and it's on my next line.
I'm just curious because I, I, like, I know my kid is not gonna give a lot of feedback.
Yes.
But you would.
I would.
Absolutely. Um, so where are we gonna go from here? Um, well, some of that will be dictated from the state, I suppose. In six years, I might be back here with another, um, set of curricular changes. Um, so certainly that's gonna dictate it to us, um, what we see just in terms of trends in AP scores, in SATs, uh, in the regions. Tomorrow will be a big learning experience for all of us. Um, you know, knock on wood, poo poo, we felt good about today. Um, the students felt good about today. They felt like they were really prepared. Um, there were no major surprises, but I think we look at every test as a learning experience and, and gives us really good feedback in terms of, oh, that's interesting. Like, you know, if kids put this down or, oh, wow, they really did get this. Like, we were so nervous about it and they did great. Um, so that will definitely inform our instruction. Uh, I know at the high school, we've had a really big focus on grading practices and I think that's gonna continue next year. Um, some of our teachers have already made changes. Uh, so just really continuing to look at those grading practices, different opportunities to demonstrate learning. Um, and again, every year, I think Tim saw this when he was chair and I, I firmly agree with him. We, we pride ourselves in terms of not owning a course in the department and continuously making changes. Because I think it brings new life and, and new blood into a course just to have different folks teach it and, and look at it in a different perspective. So when we do that, that kind of reinvigorates that work in common assessments because now you have someone else coming in saying, oh, like, did you ever consider the assessment having this? Or maybe you should have something else, or maybe we should do more of something or less. So, um, that's gonna continue to be, to be work that we explore. Um, again, we're gonna continue with the surveys. Our data story, if you take a look at the last part of our data story, um, it is 41 pages. But if you look at the forty, first page, uh, it will talk about the, uh, use of surveys and the intended use of surveys next year, as Tim mentioned, just really trying to get an idea of, are these rich tasks working? What are the kids thinking of them? So, uh, looking at curricular and non-curricular rich tasks. And in particular, we've come up with a non-curricular one that is gonna be the same for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So we'll be able to get kind of a whole middle school view of the same task, which is kind of cool. Um, and then Tim and I are exploring the potential for a parent follow-up because we did do several parent-focused groups going into the acceleration change. And so we think it would be a good opportunity for us to just hear, uh, from parents in the community now that we've made the change and see what's happening.
That's a great idea.
It really helped us in designing the initial shift and I think we avoided some, some things that maybe would have been problematic because we got some really good input from parents. So I think six years, seven years later, it's time to bring groups back together to reflect on the experience.
But are you just looking for parent feedback on the accelerated pathways or on the, like, the, the three-teacher model question here?
The three-teacher model isn't forever, right? So we'll, we'll talk, I mean, I have to just say it, right? We'll talk transitions over time. Um, but I think it's good to explore how the three-teacher model serves its purpose for helping teachers to help kids through a transition process as they're changing course loads, right?
Yeah.
I think one thing that's tricky in a way is that in the middle school, it's a team structure.
Right.
Which obviously you can't do in the high school.
Yeah.
You, you have this like extraordinarily cohesive picture of a student, you know, because all the teachers are just constantly, then you get into the high school and by nature, it's more fragmented because everybody has different schedules, so you can't help that. But then the, if you multiply the teachers within a subject, it gets a little bit more complicated.
Although in this accelerated program, they're teaching it at the same time, just like their team teaching at the middle school, right? In the ninth grade algebra.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I think what we wanna make sure of is, so from our teacher's standpoint, and I can't emphasize this enough, like, whether it's seventh grade or, or the ninth grade with that range of students, they look at all of those students as their students. They don't look at it as like, oh, it's, it's my section and I'm just, you know, we're like, they really truly look at every student as their student. Now, if the, if the freshmen are not feeling that, then we have to change something, right? We have to address that. Um, but I hope that you leave here at least knowing that that, that is definitely our intent, um, is to really provide the best learning experience for the students and, and we always have their interest, uh, their best interest at heart. And if that's getting lost in translation, then we just have to figure out a better way to translate it.
So we, we need to look at the impact that's happening. And if it's not having the impact we intend, we have to make some adjustments to that.
And impacted, right. If whether, I mean, if you have an academic impact, but not a social emotional one that we're looking for, right? And so both have to be looked at.
I commend Lisa and the math department for being able to look at difficult data and being able to look at student feedback even when it's hard. And I know when I was a teacher, I used to always have my kids evaluate my course. And I wouldn't read their evaluations until the middle of summer, after I've decompressed a little, removed myself, and sometimes there were some hard things in there. But I knew if I was gonna get better as a teacher, I had to really look at, you know, even the negative comments or the experiences that weren't what I intended and think about what needed to shift in my practice.
Yeah, and it's.
So that's that, the teachers and I, I think that's amazing. It takes a lot of courage to do better as a teacher.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say, it takes a lot of courage to do that and to share those results with everyone else that's teaching that course. So it's one thing to survey your kids and to kind of hear what they think, whether it's anonymous or not, but it's quite another to survey them and, and put yourself out there and have everyone else in the department read those comments, uh, whether, you know, for good or for bad. So I, I do really thank the, the department for being open to that. I think we've gotten a lot of really good feedback as a result of that. Um, and like I said, we're in course correct. Biggest thing I could have to take away from that. Yep.
I have a quick, oh, sorry. I have just a quick question, just sort of going back to this whole concept of the rich tasks, which is amazing. I mean, I'm actually excited to go read this book.
Thank you!
Weirdly. Um, but I, I know that you were saying that there is, there are a lot of people who have expressed the interest in this. It sounds to me like you're trying to integrate these rich tasks all the way through it, right? For, through all the schools. But my question sort of is, what is the buy-in like with the teachers? And I'm sure you're always gonna have the range of those. We're so excited and those are like, kind of setting their ways. So how do you make sure?
So interesting, the rich tasks, the book for us was really just more supportive of something we were existing, like an existing structure we had. Um, I think maybe the first time that we worked with a consultant, people were wary, but after that first time, I mean, she's so fabulous. And I think when you see, when you see the students in the room and their eyes are lighting up and there's kids that normally don't participate and they're, you know, offering something to the conversation, uh, you get buy-in pretty quickly that way.
So I guess part two of that, my question, that, which is so amazing and I've also seen like the vertical, um, problems and all that. I think it's, it's awesome and I love it. It's research-backed. So I guess the other part of my question is, how do you ensure that this is happening in every single class across, you know, all those schools? It's a lot. It's a lot of teachers. It's a lot of personalities. It's a lot, you know.
I will tell you the, the nicest thing about the, the vertical boards, uh, is it makes students' thinking visible and it makes it easily visible to anybody walking in the room. Because you can just do a very quick walk down the hallway and see folks write the boards, folks write the boards, folks write the boards, um, and, and get a very quick feel of what that classroom looks like. Um, I think with any of the, you know, sometimes it can be a department that, you know, if, if there's something new, maybe they'll ask a lot of questions, but if they see it works, they're all in. And with the vertical boards and the random grouping, with that especially, they have seen the power of it. Uh, the, oh, I'll tell you, the only negative of a vertical board, um, is space in a room. Um, so I mean, maybe we'll camp out in the new library. I'm just kidding. Um, but, uh, aside from that, it, the kids, I mean, if you've seen a kindergarten classroom and you ask someone to go to the board to get, you know, twenty-something hands up in the air, kids love the board.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
So if, if a student has one teacher, it's very easy to go for extra help.
Yep.
If a student has three teachers, how is the extra help working? Because I know extra help in the morning has been a godsend. I think it's.
Yes.
Been great because teachers come even and, you know, they have their afternoons themselves and they, it, it, but there's a block of time. How do they know who to go to?
So sometimes that's, that's student-directed. Um, sometimes they might feel like they resonate with one teacher over another and they might go there in the morning. We've been noodling on and, and just haven't really gotten, uh, enough momentum behind it, but I, what we would think would be maybe really cool is to try to offer even just once a week, like targeted office hours and just say, Mr. Stone and So is going to have a special, you know, topic on solving systems, if you wanna go there. Um, just to kind of bring a more top, like, right? Because sometimes students, you just even get more buy-in from students when it's targeted versus like come to office hours. You know, the optics of come to office hours and come to office hours to learn about systems of equations, uh, you get a lot more buy-in from that specificity, so.
And only because we have both the presence of all the audience and we have Mr. Smolinski in the audience. And I just, when they came from HCC, they have tremendous support after school.
Yes.
Is there anything like that up to high school?
I mean, some teachers still do. Uh, you know, I, I've.
There is that after-school program where students come and support other students. So it's almost peer-supported with, with faculty members, Laura. Is there anything?
I don't know that we have it with that. Like, we do have a pretty robust, uh, peer tutoring. We've definitely gotten them to offer the kids involved, um, whether it's peer tutoring or in the morning. Um, I, at, like, after-school always tended to butt up against athletics. Like, that tended to be our biggest, uh, impediment to that. Um, but I'm sure that's something, you know, if enough folks have expressed the interest, Mr. Ross would be, you know, always talking with students about that as well. Um, but I can tell you, I've, I've seen a number of teachers during lunch, during free periods, certainly before the regions exams, there was a lot of, uh, targeted after-school, uh, help offered for students in addition to the morning sessions, so we'll take you whenever, whenever you wanna help.
Please thank them for all the extra help because the extra help really, it empowers them. From what I hear from the colleges, it empowers them to then, really adult when they go to college, to go for extra help and not feel embarrassed.
Yes.
All the extra help is really worthwhile at all these levels. All the extra help is really worthwhile at all these levels.
I like the idea of topical extra-help sessions. I think that's, I remember having that experience in college. You'd come and there's going to be a teaching assistant who's going to focus on X, Y, or Z. That was helpful.
Knowing that's where your issue is, you've got no time.
Right. It gets them to be self-aware. So it's part of that teaching, this sort of regulation and self-awareness of their skills. Thank you. Any other questions for Lisa? I know that was pretty in-depth, but that's the goal of the state of the department is to go pretty deep with some areas.
I don't need to give the mic back yet. I will, I will keep talking into it.
Let me commend Lisa on two other things that are, fall within the domain of the math department, but we don't really talk about them regularly. One is our computer science program is within the math department. We have Lisa teaching computer science principles and another teacher, Carly Soraco. We have Chris Lewick teaching computer science A. Who teaches the intro now?
Chris Lewick has intro and also pathways.
Right. So, you know, all of that falls within there and computer science, we have a, a very rigorous computer science program as well that we've had for many years. And I want to thank Lisa for leading that work as well. And also Lisa's involvement with her colleague Jen Layden doing the startup, the entrepreneurship program. We're in our second year and Lisa's done tremendous work. She's taught one of the sections herself. And we just had our, our pitch night the other night. And that's a tremendous, a lot of, of, amount of work that Lisa's put into that with the teachers who have been teaching that course. And I want to thank Lisa. And at some point, we'll do updates on those programs as well, both the computer science and the startup. But, um.
And our students got a little shout-out from Noah Kagan, which was amazing. So our year-two students had the opportunity, thanks to working with both Chris Walsh and Tim, they had the opportunity to do a, like ninety-minute Zoom with Noah Kagan, who's a famous entrepreneur, YouTuber, everything, author now, just came out with a book Million Dollar Weekend, has a lot of great stuff in there. So he set up a ninety-minute Zoom with our kids where he were, he very willingly gave them all in a fishbowl format, feedback on what they were doing right, what they needed to do wrong. He was very candid. And then a couple days later, I have no idea, and I opened my email, this was Noah's weekly email, which I then had my husband research how many people this goes to, and it's over a million. In his weekly email, gave a shout-out to two of our students' products.
That's brilliant.
It was really amazing.
I'll be sharing this information internet-handed, actually. So you'll see it.
Yeah. So that was, uh, it was really exciting. Um, it was really exciting. So the kids were really excited about that.
Is your uptake into computer science?
Oh, yes. They, they can't get enough. Uh, that honestly, that's our, our biggest issue is like, there are so many kids, there's so much interest. Uh, the kids are always looking for more. Tim and I are looking at just some different opportunities, whether it's in the summer, during the year, especially with AI, you know, for kids to, to continue on with computer science.
Lisa, can you remind everybody of the sequence of computer science classes?
Absolutely. So we have kind of some that live with us, some that live in robotics. So we have an intro to CS class, that's a semester course, and that's open to all levels, typically freshmen. And then we have a pathways and engineering course, that's a survey course, also a semester. It's completely project-based. They do some really cool things. I saw them building wind turbines the other day. It was really cool. And I will tell you, just from the tremendous work that's being done, K-8 with the technology, every single year that kids are coming in, it's with more and more and more. And so we just adapt to what they're coming in with, but it's fabulous. The skills that they come in with are amazing. Um, we also have the robotics one and two, and then the robotics master, which also has a fair bit of programming in it. We will also now be implementing some coding into the startup program because the students are really looking to be generating like AutoCAD and, and 3D renderings of their prototypes. So we're going to be infusing that into our skills for the year one. Um, and then going on from there, we have AP Computer Science Principles, which is the zero-entry pool. You have to have absolutely no programming background. We will take you from zero to hero by the end of the year. We have APCSA, which is kind of what your more traditional CS course was. It's all Java all the time, whereas Principles is four or five different languages. Um, and then we have our APCSA and CSP TA program. So students that have taken either APCSA or AP CSP have the opportunity to serve as a teaching assistant in their senior year. And yet they still want more.
It's a lot of courses for a spot.
Yeah.
But Lisa and I have been betting around the option of some other course to possibly run by Chris in the future, so.
Hey, Chris!
Is that a good shot we're at? Lisa and I get bored and start thinking of ideas.
I think we're, yeah, usually on napkins. That's the best idea is come on napkins. So, um, yeah, it's been really successful. I, I mean, just the growth in both computer science and startup in the, in the past couple of years is, is phenomenal, the merging of the two. I can tell you, we are also looking, I've been talking with Chris Lewick about trying to do something where we get, you know, students in either intro or, or pathways as, like a, like an RFP process where students will go out, out to bid and ask students in the pathways class, hey, I need this prototype. Is there anyone in pathways that could build that prototype for me? And then they give them the specs and then the pathways folks kind of say, oh yeah, I think I could build that for you. And then they go and build it and they bring it back and they collaborate. So I think it'd be really cool.
And I want to thank our elementary technology teacher and our middle school technology teacher who, that program, they keep getting deeper and deeper with coding. So I was talking with Chris Lewick recently and he's like, I have to keep changing things because kids are coming in with that knowledge already. So he keeps evolving the languages he uses, the type of robotics he's doing, also with Peter Lipton. So we, we keep evolving the high school program because kids are learning to code at much younger ages and our curriculum is doing that for kids. And it's very exciting.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for letting us have that much time. We appreciate it tonight.
We'll be back at seven-thirty for grading tomorrow. So it's going to look nice.
Yes, that's just when the Beagles come. And then eight o'clock is a hard start.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to unfinished business, we have policy review. Twelve-point-one policies, review of policies for in nineteen-hundred parent involvement, fifty-three-hundred code of conduct, first read sixty-two-forty investments, sixty-seven-hundred purchasing, first read sixty-seven-hundred R, purchasing regulations, appendix A for deletion, addendum nine dash twenty-two twenty video conferencing, addendum two dash nine dash two-one COVID-19 athletic placement waiver, informed consent, addendum two dash nine dash twenty-one code of conduct related to school sports.
Gina, maybe I could just give some organization around it.
Yes, please.
Enforce the gravity here, but just in terms of the, the policies that are on the agenda for tonight. So as we know, some of our policies have been re-reviewed annually and adopted by the Board of Ed every year. So for the first one, parental involvement, as well as sixty-two-forty, which is investments, there have been no changes to those policies, but rather they're here for annual adoption moving forward. In terms of sixty-seven-hundred, sixty-seven-hundred R, and fifty-three-hundred, as the policy committee, no, maybe I'll start with the code of conduct. Thank you so much for your patience throughout the entire school year as we work through, I'm quite plain, the code of conduct, a really important policy as those drives, not only the expectations in terms of what we would expect for all our visitors and our students and everyone who comes to school events and participates in any activities in the district, but also any kind of consequences that we need to put in place as well as any procedures and protocols that we need to follow regarding discipline. And it of course incorporates our New York State DASA law, our human rights law, as well as title line to ensure that our students, when they are here, that they are in a safe and supportive learning environment. So this policy will need to be put up tomorrow for public comment for thirty days. So in order just to organize a little bit and not be, not have such a daunting task, we have a clean copy version as well as a track change copy version. So if you, whichever you prefer, if you'd like to take a look at it over the next thirty days and offer any edits and suggestions, we'll certainly bring it back to our Board of Ed meeting, our reorganization meeting in July. That's our code of conduct. And then I'm going to just briefly talk about the purchasing policy, sixty-seven-hundred and sixty-seven-hundred R. And Kelly's here to jump in at any time. But again, this is another policy that needs to be updated every year and some, in terms of purchasing, we had already just made some changes. But the latest changes are to include the option for the district to use best value as, which allows us to use factors well beyond the lowest price if it, if it's in the best interest and benefits the district, as well as it permits us to use the inclusion of standardization for our supplies. Tonight, for example, on the agenda, we were able to use that for athletic uniforms and radios. And then finally, it allows us to, outlines our current practices of cooperative purchasing and our ability to piggyback on, on other bids. And then finally, sixty-seven-hundred R is the regulation in that you'll see obviously a lot of procedures and steps that we need to follow. It incorporates all the updates in the purchasing policy. And most importantly, or one major change, was that it includes the procurement guidance for federal awards. Any questions? Okay. Oh, and also I just want to include the last three Mia that you read in terms of the appendix or the addendums, those were all part of our code of conduct during the COVID period. Obviously, we are out of that, they no longer exist, so we're putting the cover for deletion.
Okay.
Just one quick question, just the language, harassment, bullying, discrimination.
Sure.
Is it like, does it come from some, somewhere in the code? Because I was, I was just looking at, you know, it's, um.
Where are you?
Uh, let's see, page two.
Are you on the chart?
I'm on the tract, yeah.
Okay.
And I was just reading the sentence like harassment, bullying, or discrimination may put a severe, a single severe incident, petty slights or trivial inconveniences or multiple incidents that are pervasive in nature. And I was just trying to, I was just trying to understand like petty slights and trivial, trivial inconveniences, like what, what that exactly, what that means.
So it used to be that it had to be pervasive and repeated over time.
Right.
Yeah.
And then they said, no, actually, it's, it's not. It could be something that is smaller.
They use like the word trivial?
Yeah.
Trivial.
So in fact, I think that may be the last time, when we were redoing the sexual harassment policy, that this exact language came up because we were, they were, and our Chinese would say the threshold in terms of what substantiates sexual harassment has been brought down to this like trivial, like slights or, or anything petty that can be deemed as harassment. So that language is the same. We use it, that policy, we use it here, you know, under harassment in terms of DASA as well as your rank law.
Got it.
We always think of trivial as unimportant.
Yeah.
That's.
That's what it means.
Unimportant on a, on a scale.
Unimportant.
Yes. Might deem it that way.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve for annual review nineteen-hundred parent involvement and, that, the rest of it's the second, right? So sixty-two-forty investments, sixty-seven-hundred for purchasing, the code of conduct, fifty-three-hundred, which will be up for thirty days on, for, for public comment. Public comment. And the addendums, the addendums and appendices for deletion based on, that we're no longer in the active pandemic. So we've got addendums, video conferencing, COVID-19 athletic placement waiver, informed consent, and COVID code of conduct related to school sports form. Does anyone think?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Okay. New business. But we need to adopt our handbook, our board handbook. So can I have a motion? That's been, we've been working on that for several months. And thank you to Jen and Deb for putting us on that. And Mia for the ideas. Thank you.
So moved.
And so we need to actually adopt it. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Okay. And we will need to adopt that every year at the rework. Staff reports. Yes.
I have to get up for staff reports because.
Although I have enough energy for another five hours, my computer has dawned.
So I will sit here for my student highlights. First of all, I want to thank the Byron Hills Education Foundation for this terrific grant. In May, we had the students attend the mindfulness assemblies on the BHEF patio up at Coman Hill, which was really pretty tremendous. And they've done this before and the kids just really benefited from it. So thank you so much to the BHEF. Coman Hill also has seen their share of music, first and second graders did songs of the seasons. And now we will have our annual kindergarten flag day performances in June. We also had middle school, this is fantastic, our tri-state geography bee students represented HCC at Hackley. And we had a bunch of students qualify for the final round, with one student placing second overall and another placing fourth. Congratulations. What a tremendous student business. Charlotte Brodbach honored at, in the company of women benefit, and she is recognized by the YWCA in White Plains and Central Westchester in the company of women benefit luncheon. She began her journey as a sophomore in the Y Leaders Program and then the Y Leaders Advisory Board. She participates in the Changemaker Council of One World Girl, and she led the community discussions and critical issues like trafficking and exploitation. A lot of this coming from the Global Scholars Program that she is in, and she is absolutely tremendous. So congratulations to you. And I love that picture. Jen Layden is a fan and has went to that event as well. Samara Brown reminds me of my youth. She's going to Wesleyan University and plans to major in English. Nothing can make me happier, other than seeing her on the lawn at Crittenton the other day taking a break from her internship in working in some of our middle school classrooms. But Samara won a twenty-five-hundred-dollar National Merit Scholarship. She's among twenty-five-hundred students chosen from over fifteen thousand finalists in this, in this section. So that scholarship winners are finalists from each state. They have a strong mix of accomplishment skills and potential to succeed in rigorous college studies. And I reminded her that the career of an English teacher is a very rewarding one. We'll see. She doesn't know if she wants to be a writer or really focus on literature yet, so I say, you know, good options. Chris Walsh and I were fortunate to go with Grace Lynn and Danielle Dosai to the Scholastic Achievement Dinner, where they were honored for their academic excellence in Byron Hills with all other students from every school in Westchester County. It was really nice. There were about four hundred and seventy people there, students. Almost main cast and crew. A lot about relationships, which is really the, the topic of the day for any high school student. I want to congratulate them. While I didn't get to see it in person, I did get to see the video and it was tremendous. Savannah Mathis, she advances to the Junk Couture World Finals. I don't know, I'm hoping you can get a good sense of this picture and that you were at the art show, the AP Art Show last month. She created a wedding dress and it was out of old lace curtains and sort of like a, like cork kind of material. I'm going to pass this around to the board. This was the invitation that she gave to me to go see her wedding dress at this AP Art Show. I mean, the invitation is in itself just inexplicable. The dress is absolutely gorgeous and she is amongst students from Milan, New York, Paris Luncheon, and Abu Dhabi. It's a global competition where they create these outfits out of recycled materials. Savannah is serving as a bit of an inspiration for Jane Carlin, who's now thinking about sustainable fashion course for the high school. We've had some conversations about that. She'll be talking to Chris Walsh and Tim about that. And she will be going to Monaco. She's been invited to Monaco to bring her dress and to be judged. I mean, I don't, I don't really know what else I could say about that. Fantastic.
That picture's not doing it justice, I have to say. It's, it's such a beautiful dress.
Yeah, you know what I think is the picture's small.
To prepare that for a wedding.
Yeah, it, it is absolutely beautiful and Savannah's just a great artist. She did the science research picture for their advertisement for this week as well. These two, boom, also just absolutely kill me. Isabella Lambert and Angelina and I, they have in the I Create Show, the Bruce Museum in Greenwich, it's a competition.[1792.25] It's a competition. Their work will be showcased from June 11th to September 8th and they'll be competing for cash prizes as well. Um, just two really remarkable pieces. I, I don't even understand how they're capable of that. Um, Unified Basketball wins at a big home game. What a day. All of the students were released early. We faced John Jay. The students there were absolutely terrific. We had a promposal from, um, one of the, one of our students to another student, which was met with great applause from the audience. Fantastic. Um, just want to thank Coach Carpenter and everybody, all of the teachers in the program who really helped to support, uh, Pat Benacci, who was the head cheerleader. I mean, we, we had everybody who was involved in that. Um, mid, former middle school teachers came up to see the event as well. It was really tremendous. Our Byron Hills High School students that we celebrated at the awards ceremony, um, on May 29th, just not too long ago. And Julia Tuziani was honored with the High Black Jack Wallenberg Award and gave a remarkable speech. New York State Scholarship for Academic Excellence recipients. We have five recipients from the high school, um, and these students were selected as scholarship, for scholarships for academic excellence. This is where you're a junior and they tell you that you will have a scholarship to go to specific New York State universities. Should you decide to choose those universities when you're a senior and, and receive acceptance from them. Um, Ashley Stangle awarded with Senator Shelley Mayer's 2024 Youth Leadership Award for outstanding community service. Um, she also is, was just recently, um, accepted into a program over the summer. And, you know, it gives me hope for our political future, doesn't it? Right? When I see that. Congratulations to Ashley and to Senator Mayer, who will benefit from Ashley's tutelage. Um, and so were Science Fair. Finally, our sophomores get their place in science research world. Um, this is where they start coming up. Um, we had students winning first, second, and third place in that largest science fair in the nation. So we are so proud of our science research student. Global Scholars Recognition of the Changemaker Projects Impact Events. So we had 20 teams of year two students presenting. Um, and we had quite a few of our students who were presenting there. And you will see at the bottom, Ashley's work was chosen as the overall winner. Congratulations, Ashley Stangle. Do what's right, developing an awareness campaign about the issue of book banning in American schools. And that's it.
Jen. So that was Jen's chance to brag about our kids and now we get to do a little bragging of our own. So we have two people to brag about today. Scott Levy was honored yesterday
Yay.
At the Westcut Annual Meeting, um, for his years of service to that organization. On our behalf, which we've, I mean, we've sort of on our behalf, we've been, certainly benefited from having you on the board there. And I know they, they definitely benefited. It was a lovely dinner and the speeches were just really nice. And it was, we were very proud of you. And Dr. Lamia. I, I sent a blast app to the board, to the community, but we wanted to, to just take a little minute to, to recognize the fact that Dr. Lamia was honored by, um, Mike Lawler, son of Mike Lawler, as a woman of distinction. And Mike Lawler is a woman of distinction to us. And we knew that even before he said so. And we wanted to just from the board, give you a tiny little token of appreciation, show you how much we love you and, uh, appreciate you and that, uh, you are our district's moral compass. And you'll, I, I better explain it because it's very tiny. But it's the coordinates, it's the coordinates for the district office. It's really just a little token, but we just wanted to, to tell you how much we appreciate you. And that you, you know, it'll always be your home.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I can't say any words.
I need, I need
That's so beautiful, my moral compass.
That's it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
In case I fall down, someone I'll just, I don't have a medical bracelet.
Just take her here.
Yeah, that's right.
Leader of Microscopes. That's where to take me.
Thank you so much, everyone. I really appreciate it.
We appreciate, we appreciate all of you.
We appreciate it.
Our fearless leader.
Yes. Do you guys have, anybody have reports?
Nobody else wants to talk.
Any of the reports? We had the, the PTSA luncheon today. It was absolutely lovely.
So lovely.
Thank you to the PTSA for including us and for all of the work, wonderful work that they do for our, our kids and our families in the district. And with that, is that it? Oh, communications to the board. We've got an invitation to the Science Research Symposium, which is tomorrow night. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
For the minutes?
For minutes. Where's the, where's that? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Where was that last? From May 7th?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor? And can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for a long night.